Good evening. Call to order, Commissioner meeting. If we can all stand for the invocation, thank you. Who's got the invocation? Am I? Okay, do the honors, thank you, sir.
Lord, I ask your blessing on this meeting tonight. I know you're concerned about our county and our state and our country and our world. And I'm thankful, Father, that you listen to our prayers. I just pray tonight that we would be wise and listen carefully to what our managers and our people are saying. And that, Father, you would have your hand of blessing on our decisions. We pray in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to move item 2J from the consent to old business, please.
Any other, any other changes? Do you have a motion for the approved consent agenda?
For move.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. Are we moving into public comments? No, before, um...
If we can get a vote on the agenda as well.
I'm sorry?
If we can get a vote on the agenda.
Oh, can we have approval for the agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. Before, before we continue on into, let's do public comments, okay? Let's do public comments. We have David Montgomery. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir. Ian, you have three minutes? Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Montgomery. I live at 215 Mill Ridge Road here in Lee County. I've lived in this county for 27-plus years. My wife and three of my children were born in this county and have been here ever since. I understand that during COVID, it was necessary to adjust the timing for the solid waste convenience centers. That time has passed. During the operations, I'm sorry, excuse me. The convenience centers close at noon on Saturday, and they do not open again until Monday morning. For people that have standard nine-to-five jobs, Monday through Friday, this is not convenient. This means if I work on a Saturday, Saturday project to have any trash, it has to be off by noon on Saturday, or it sits at my house for a week. This means that if I have any trash during the week, I have to either put it in my car and take it with me on my way to work and drop it off on my way to work, or leave early from work and try and rush home and be at the center by 6:00 PM. I would like to request that we return to the standard full-time hours that were pre-COVID, which was basically all day Saturday and half-day Sunday. I'm not asking for anything more than that. If it's a matter of money or time, I suggest you consider closing the facilities on Tuesdays or Wednesday when they're not used that much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, and next, Robbie Waters, were you going to introduce somebody for us? And while you're up, can you address a gentleman's concerns real quick, too, please? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. The solid waste convenience centers were closed during those COVID hours, and that's something we can definitely look back at, maybe doing, you know, Saturdays or Sundays, and address those, but that's something we'll need to look at and see if we've got people available.
I thought I went there, it was like four o'clock on a Saturday.
I think I would have to go back and look to see exactly what they are now. I thought they were open all days on Saturdays, but I would have to go back and verify that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have somebody to introduce to us?
I do. We have a new developmental services director, Brendan Key.
So Brendan, if you'd come on up.
He's coming from private industry, and this is his first day on the job, so we would like to welcome him to Lee County, and we're very excited to have him.
Commissioner and Board, thanks for the opportunity. Look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Thanks for coming. So get back to us on the hours and any recommendations you have for us?
Yes, sir, we'll have that for you next meeting.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, moving on to old business. Approval of resolution authorizing the approving of refinancing. Taking that, please take that. Thank you.
Good evening. As the county moves ahead with the sale of the limited obligation bond to refinance the existing installment financing agreement regarding the Eugene Moore Center, as well as the cost of additional improvements and expenses related to the refinancing, several financing documents will need to be executed. The board is being asked to approve the following resolution, which is approving the final terms of the refinancing and authorizing officers to sign various documents as required. The resolution reads as follows. Resolution authorizing and approving the refinancing of an installment financing agreement entered into by the county to acquire a site and existing facilities to be used primarily by Central Carolina Community College and the financing of additional improvements to such site through the issuance of a not-to-exceed $7.7 million limited obligation bond and the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection therewith. A motion will be, will be, will need to be made to approve the resolution.
Any discussion? Anybody have any concern or anyone discuss?
I have a question. I'm just trying to understand because it's kind of detailed. But does the master trust agreement cover future bonds for the $14 million? Because we, we had originally $12 million, I believe, and then we added $2 million? So does the master trust agreement, does it have the capability to cover all of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then would supplemental trust agreements need to be added if we were going to negotiate those, correct?
Yes, sir, that's the reason we did the master trust agreement and the supplementals. We knew there were going to be extra phases to this project because all the projects were not far enough along to do it at this time.
I got you. And then do we have to use the same funding institution for subsequent, for supplementals?
No, sir.
Okay. And the only other question I have is, with respect to the library, would we need a master, a different master agreement for that? Or is that the way we would usually do it? I understand that the Moore Center is kind of in phases.
Right.
Would, would that be true for the library?
The library would be a totally separate agreement because it would be separate collateral.
Okay.
Okay, this is the master trust agreements being done because you've got multiple phases of the project that would be off the same collateral.
I see.
Okay, so the library would be a totally separate agreement when we go out to bid for it.
Okay, and would we have a master agreement for that?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Because you would not have multiple phases.
I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move to approve the recommendation.
There's a motion on the floor, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're moving to approve update of judicial facility security policy. Please, sir.
I can, I can start. The Commissioners adopted the judicial security, or judicial facility security policy on December 19th of 2022. The Office of the Sheriff is charged with providing security at the courthouse under North Carolina General Statute 17E-1. I can answer questions, and the sheriff is here to answer questions as well. But originally, the policy adopted by the board allowed exceptions to be granted for entry using the back door to the courthouse. However, due to the amount of requests and initial concerns from the sheriff's office, and they had had the marshal's office come down and take a look at security here, the sheriff has made the decision to only allow entrance using the main entrance of the courthouse. And so the Commissioners are being asked to approve the updated policy to remove that exception. And please note that some employees whose job offices are located in the courthouse may have access other than the main door, such as the clerk of courts, who I believe utilize the side entrance and the magistrate's office as well.
So you had a concern?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, recently I asked to move this. I had some calls with concerns about, well, not really concerns, but about why this new amendment was being done. And from what I was looking at when we approved on in December, it said that they, an exception to enter and exit in the front door may be given. And I was just going to let the sheriff come up and maybe address some of those more concerns for us that have changed this part of it to where the new amendment needs to come in.
Sheriff, would you be so kind? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. One of the main reasons with the people coming in one main door at the courthouse during normal operating hours is to be able to screen the people that are coming in the building and to keep up with who's coming in. If you've ever been to the courthouse, when you walk in the lobby, there is a door that was designed to be an emergency exit door, and it still serves that purpose. That's the door that we're referencing to as the back door of the courthouse. As it is right now, if you go to that door and hold it in for 15 seconds, it opens and alarm sounds, it's a fire exit door. Same thing whenever you open the door. I learned recently it stays open for an additional 15 seconds. So one of the things that I wanted to, to look at was to talk to our employees, the people who are there working every day, because I'm not down there every day. And they said before when people would come in, they were under the impression it was an as-needed basis. And I would think that that would mean if I need to come in there to bring something in or something, instead of walking right around the building and coming in the other front door, and they don't feel comfortable with it because it's to their back. So it's to their back and they can't see who's coming in. And then whenever we started talking about maybe letting specific people come in, we started getting requests from people that shouldn't have access to that door. And my concern is, is where do we stop that at? So there's a bell bondsman across the road, so should he have access to that door? Should other people down the road have access to that door? And it's just not safe. And at the end of the day, as the sheriff, I'm responsible for security of that building. It's not going to be the clerk, it's not going to be the magistrate. If something bad there would happen, it would be on me and my staff. And I just don't feel like it's safe to use that back door. I feel like it was designed to be an emergency exit, and that's what it should be.
Thank you. Do I have any questions?
Did you also mention that the US Marshals came in?
Yeah, so that's happened on two different occasions. We had some people from the US Marshals Office come to assess, to see what kind of job we were doing, to get some feedback. And two of the things that they pointed out each time they come was the entrance, having one main entrance in and not using that back door as an entrance point.
Any other questions? Any motions?
So move.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any... Only for public speaking, sir. Thank you. Is that right?
It would be up to the board, if the board would like to, but typically it's public comments.
Okay.
Have we cleared the vote yet?
What's that?
Have we cleared the vote?
Yeah, we can clear the vote. All nays? Any nays? Thank you. Motion passed. Okay, go ahead, sir.
My name is Eddie Winston. I'm a member of the Lee County Bar, been practicing here for over 40 years. Our office is directly across the street from the courthouse. It seems disingenuous to me to suddenly need a change to this because that change came as a result of several of us pursuant to the county attorney's interpretation of the previous policy of requesting an exception from the clerk's office. We've been using that entrance as a keypad entry door probably for 10 years. Before that, both of the rear doors were open to the public. A number of years ago, one of those doors was secured. The other one had a card reader keypad put on it. And the only people that got in it were county employees who had a card that was issued by the county and people that applied to the county for permission to enter in which we were given an access code. That's all the people that have used it. That's all the people that we're asking to use it now. There are five lawyers in our office. We asked them, asked for permission to use that entrance. We're in and out of there three or four times a day. There's 10 or 12 lawyers in this county who spend as much time in that courthouse just about as most of the employees over there do. From the comments I've heard here tonight, there's probably plenty of people in this room that have never set foot in that courthouse and don't understand what the logistics of it are. It hasn't been a problem. We've never had a problem as a result of people using that door. The two bailiffs who are primarily there at the entrance with the metal detectors know every one of us who use that door by sight. There's no way to get around the other side of the building except for walking all the way around the building. The parking lot to the east or the south side of the courthouse is reserved for courthouse employees. The other parking lot, usually by the time the DA's office staff gets there and the sheriff's department is mostly full, which leaves parking in a remote parking lot and a lot of parking on Elm Street. The parking lot that newly constructed over on Elm Street, like last week, there were two days, had something going on down in the 911 center where the entire parking lot was full. People parking on the street have no way to get around the other side of the building except walking down the street. There's no sidewalks there. And so you either walk down the middle of the street to get to a sidewalk, or you walk across the courthouse lawn. All we're asking is simply if there's a sidewalk, there are doorways there, is for the people that apply to it, and as we had to go to the county offices to get an identification card to unlock certain doors in the courthouse for us and our staff, the same thing applies. Now, if the sheriff's department thinks that the Lee County Bar is a security risk, this is the first I've heard of it. Nobody was using that door except those who had permission. And it was clearly understood that you let somebody else use your card to get in, and you're losing your card and your privilege to the door. There was never any question about it. Most of the traffic in and out of that building is between about 8:45 and 9:15 most weekday mornings. Another little rush generally perhaps right before lunch. But other than that, I mean, I'm in and out of there four or five times a day, most every day of the week, if not more than four or five times a day. And probably during the course of the day, other than first thing in the morning with a crowd of people going into one of the courtrooms, there's not that much traffic there. I understand the marshal's office has been here a couple of times and looked at that door. They look at things with a little different eye. It's not open to the public. It had a very limited number of people that had access to the door, and that's all we're asking for. It's a matter of purity convenience. I just ask you to reconsider it.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. County Pool Management Service contract.
Good evening. With the ongoing difficulties trying to hire lifeguards, staff put together a request for proposals for a pool contract service. That way, we could try to provide the best service here in the county. Last year, we were lacking in lifeguards. We had to pare down our schedule when it came to public swim. We had to pare down our schedule when it came to swimming lessons. We could not offer pool rentals due to the seven lifeguards that we had last year.
During the RFP, we reached out to seven different companies, and two submitted. Out of those two, we took those and graded those, and we recommend Carolina Pool Management for this service. The contract also comes with a $20 million liability buffer to, to the, to the county. So dealing with pools, that's a huge benefit to have. In front of you is the contracts for both of those, for both OT Sloan and Horton. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
If I may, for the Horton contract, that, if you recall, we're using ARPA funds to construct the Horton pool, and therefore, we will have to add some federal ARPA provisions for the service contract. We are working on those currently, and they're not finalized. However, in order not to delay anything, we are asking for approval on that contract subject to also the federal provisions being finalized by the legal department.
Discussion?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Any other discussion?
Can I just ask one question? So the service contract, is that for the entirety of the season? Or are they still paid per hour, per lifeguard that comes?
That is a, that is a lump sum that we can actually budget for.
Okay.
And that would take us May 27th through the end of our pool season.
Okay.
Once, once the pool season's over and public swim is...
When is it end?
It ends as soon as the pool season is over, which is September.
Like Labor Day.
It's in the contract, I'm not sure the exact date, but...
It's usually Memorial Day, Labor Day.
That's right, yeah. But once that contract ends, at that point, the county takes back over the pool to make sure that it is maintained. And we'll make a decision at that point to either drain it or keep it up and keep throwing chemicals in it to make sure it's ready for the spring.
Okay, and then we're still, or the county would still maintain the pool maintenance and stuff? Or this company, it becomes basically their pool from...
Yeah, so basically, the county turns into a facilitator.
Okay.
Whereas our facility, we're still showing up, you know, every other day, once a week, just to check in, make sure that everything is running smooth. If something were to break, the county is still responsible to fix that because we, because we do still own it.
Okay, and then the, so, but the, the one I've got pulled up for OT Sloan is the $131,000 for the contract. But that includes all the lifeguards you're going to need?
That, that includes all the staff, all the chemicals?
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it, it also helps General Services as well because General Services has been supplying all the chemicals and having that manpower run back and forth between the pool and the chemical store.
Now, when it comes to the lessons, will they, will the Parks and Rec Department keep the money paid towards the lesson, or does that go toward end of year?
So that goes towards the Carolina Pool Management Service. However, we did ask that we get $5 per lesson.
Per, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think our, I think our biggest issue is that we always had troubles getting lifeguards, right?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah, that's the biggest issue. And we, and we got so far into it this year, we started back on January 1st trying to get lifeguards. And we raised the rate to $15 an hour. So in my mind, I thought we would be in a very better position than what we were last year. But we're in the same spot now.
Commissioner Lovick, question?
If for some reason they don't have enough personnel, does that mean we're going to shut down part of a pool at OT Sloan, or what's, what's the...
Well, that would be a situation I've never been in. I've actually used the pool contract service in prior years, and it's worked out great. We've never had an issue.
Don't you have the option to reduce the number of people in the pool, however?
Yeah, so last year, what we had to do was basically cut down the amount of people. So I got a bunch of phone calls from upset citizens that were, you know, packing the kids up and packing lunch up and showing up to, to the pool. And we were at our max already, and they got turned away. So if that was the case, then, you know, if they were that short on lifeguards, we would be back in that same spot again. But I feel very confident that this is what they do. This is what they do 12 months, that they're going to be able to get us the lifeguards and provide that service that we need here.
So what do they pay them?
I don't know.
I'm just, actually, if they pay them 15 and we pay them 15, why can't we pay them?
I'm only worried about what I gotta pay.
Yes, I got you.
Well, what about what you lose when we have to turn people away for lack of a lifeguard? We got any way to recover that money?
No, sir. They put a minimum of five lifeguards in their contract. So that would be 125 people, which is exactly what our max was last year.
Yeah.
So their minimum is our maximum.
We are working on a contractual provision that would bring back to us a penalty to them if they have to shut down early for lack of staffing. Because they're guaranteeing us a certain minimum staffing level. So if they fall short of that, we would probably ask to calculate it based on the day. There's a, there's a calculation built into the contract already in another provision.
I just want to make sure we had something in there.
Yes.
And also, from the county side, there, there's no fee increases. So for my residents, they would never know a difference. There's, there's, there's no fee to help cover this.
It sounds like it's the first, first come, first served swimming pool.
That's what it was last year, but we're trying to get away from that, yes, sir.
Well, make sure the citizen knows, first come, first served.
Yeah.
There was a motion, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any nays? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves, our goal is for not to have to be a first come, first served. Our goal is that they'll be able to fully staff the pool and we'll be able to open it to our normal capacity.
I agree, but some people are slow like me, won't get there in time, and they'll be mad, so...
Hopefully, we don't go that high over capacity, our normal capacity.
Put them on notice early.
Although we could be tickled to see it being in that much use.
Managers report.
The monthly March financial report is attached to your agenda. The tax collections as a percentage of the budget are 99.25%, which is slightly lower when compared to the same period last fiscal year. In reviewing expenditures, the target, the target percentage used is 83.33% for the end of March. A few departments are over this target due to the inclusion of encumbrances. If encumbrances are, if encumbrances are excluded, only juvenile detention remains over target, and that is due to the increased quantity and stay duration of Lee County juveniles in the system.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Amy wants to come and talk to you about board vacancies.
Yes, so it is that time of year again where we will have boards, committees, and commissions, term expirations in, well, effective July 1st. So I have at, all of your seats are lists of vacancies that will be coming up. So if you could keep, keep some people in mind or send them to the website to apply, or if you'd like some paper copies of applications, I can get those to you. And we will be bringing any applications received at the next couple meetings and have you vote at the July 19th meeting by ballot. And just as a quick note, the new Consolidated Board of Health and Human Services is being advertised separately because there are... because there are some additional parameters and qualifications for some of those seats. And we'll be bringing those to you at the first June meeting, I believe. Is that right, Whitney?
That's correct. The nominating team, we met last week and discussed, we reviewed the applications we've received. They're currently recruiting for additional applications, and those will be brought the first meeting in June.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Can I ask a quick question? Is the trustee for Central Carolina, is that James French?
If you could bear with me for one second? Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Walters wanted to come back up. I think he's got the hours for the convenience centers for you now.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. What I found out was that the landfill closes at 12 o'clock on Saturday. The rest of the convenience centers are open 8 to 5 on Saturday, and all of them are closed on Sundays. So, that's what we are... Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing I had was I had sent out a text to all of you this afternoon. We would like to move the budget work session that is scheduled for May 15th at 4 o'clock to Friday, May 19th at 8:30. If that is agreeable with the board, that way hopefully all the board members can attend. And we can hopefully, with the departments that will be coming, knock that out in one day, unless y'all decide to have an additional work session after the public hearing.
Do you have a motion on that?
So moved.
Any discussion?
You said 8:30?
Yes.
Breakfast be served.
I'm sorry?
Would breakfast be served? Yes, sir, we can make sure we have breakfast.
Oh, I just thought you were checking. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Thank you.
That's all you have?
That's it.
Moving on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Sharp, start with you.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Reeves?
I just got one.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to hear a brief, brief discussion about the Horton pool and the fact that it may not meet the timeline we had agreed upon. What do we have in place to...
I might tag that... I can let Jennifer take that. She's handling that one and her team.
And I might have to tag team it a little bit with Mr. Walters. He attended a meeting on site today with McGill to get, to work on verifying the current schedule.
Right.
You know, liquidated damages start tomorrow.
Okay.
JMT is on track with substantial completion, but there's some things that they're waiting on the pool contractor for in order to complete the pool house side.
How much is the liquidated damages?
$1,000 a day.
All right, thank you.
And then, you know, right now, the pool contractor is telling us completion mid-May, May 18th, with permit in hand. Honestly, we feel this is a little optimistic, so we're monitoring things as they go along, asking them to keep us updated on the schedule and if there's going to be any further delays. So, you know, we'll see come May 18th where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Robin?
No comments? No comments.
No comments. Commissioner Carver?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. There's been an interesting two weeks. First of all, I attended the Sand Hill Center annual briefing, and the Medicare expansion was discussed and the fact of how it's changing their clientele, et cetera. They also reported a lot of success with the CIT training, which has been discussed in here before, and noted that they appreciated the support and involvement of Chairman Smith. They have an awareness of our desire to hire a licensed social worker. They're aware of that, and there was some discussion about the concerns that we have with trying to provide mental health care, especially through Daymark, et cetera, after 5 o'clock on Monday through Friday. An interesting discussion happened. Evidently, in Randolph County, there's a pilot program for what they call BHUC Light, which is a behavioral health urgent care clinic, LIGHT. And the reason it's called LIGHT is it has to do with the certification of the employees that are there. And by reducing that certification level, it significantly reduces the cost of keeping it open on 24/7/365. I've heard a lot of discussion here about the fact that we need something like that. And they said that that pilot should be, is actually in progress right now. And they have requested some data, apparently, from Lee County to see whether or not a similar plan could be applied here. This is coming from Mrs. Witt, who unfortunately is leaving, I guess, the end of June. But her replacement was standing there. I'm just thinking, I don't know enough about it, and maybe you do because you're on the health board, how we can expedite maybe getting that information to them so that they could make that choice. Anyway, I'm just, I'm the messenger on that. You may have some insight on that that I don't. The other thing I wanted to talk about is my capacity as a board member on the Triangle J Council of Government Board. There was a very interesting, complete summary of what they've done, and they're looking at their budget for next year, et cetera. And one thing that they're offering, or have been for the past year and a half, is a grant assistance program. And there are 47 members in the Council of Government. Nine have already requested to join this program. They have been involved in requesting $13 million in grants and funding already in the interests of these nine people. And $3 million of that has been approved, and others are pending. In other words, it's not like they only got three out of 13. They're waiting for the reports on the other ones. How does this flow into what we're doing? Last week, I also attended an Ag Week Legacy and Land Planning Use. Well, because I know about this grant assistance program, I was able to ask the people that were there, what kind of funding do you have in order to help farmers make a transition from owning their property to maybe giving it to their children? Or how do we conserve that property? And one of the ways that you can do that is to basically sell your rights to keeping the property as farm community, which implies that there is some impact on things like water runoff management and things like that, but also in trying to complement our master planning. Well, it requires funds. And one of the reasons they can't do much is because they don't have enough funds. This is a classic example of where we could go to the DTJ Council of Government Grant Assistance Program and say, "Look, what do you got out there that we might be able to use?" And of course, there is, there are a number of resources right now that are available. My concern is that it's there. There's a limited number of people that they can help through this, that if we could expedite getting ourself in that program, I think it would help. I've talked to the manager about it, and she is more than willing, I think, to include it in the, in our upcoming budget. But if there was a way to expedite it and get it paid this year, I think it would help us. It's food for thought. That's all I have. Thank you.
What's the cost?
It's $25,000. Now, if you look at the average income for the people who have lined it up, it's $200,000 a member. So, we're investing 25 to get 200 right now, and that's based on the 3 million. That's not based on the other. So, if we could get it done, then we can start asking these kinds of questions, which might help us.
Mr. Chair, could I get my time back?
Of course.
Okay. I did, I was able to go to an event over at the Stevens Center last week with Crystal McKeever's, Mackiver's program that she has with Justice Involved folks. And it was a good program, and they had some of the people that's been in the program for an extended amount of time on a forum up there. You know, we got to ask them questions, and there was five of them. And four of them, unfortunately, I had to send to prison before. But all of them are buying houses, all of them got jobs. I just wanted to say it was a positive experience, and the program seemed to be working for these folks. And I was glad to see that. I told every one of them I was proud of.
And you should.
Yeah.
To work your way out of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's great to hear.
I would call my time back too.
No. No time for you.
When you mentioned you got to go to some of the things, and that's one thing we do, several of us as commissioners, went to the Lee County Water and Soil District Awards banquet. Very interesting. The kids came out and read poems on clean water and things like that. And also got a chance to go to the Ag Week Kickoff Breakfast. And then, the last one we went to was the, of the volunteers. Several of the staff went to that, and also the volunteers at Enrichment Center. And kudos to the staff there at the Enrichment Center and so many volunteers that were there tonight. They, some of the things they do is build wheelchair ramps for citizens and stuff that need that. So, very good banquet for those volunteers, recognizing those and the staff at the Enrichment Center for putting that on. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you.